All right, good evening, everyone. Act and Planning Board meeting of June 25th, 6:38 PM. Tonight, Jim Crowley, you will be designated associate. You got it, Jim?
I got it.
Very good, thank you, thank you very much. The approval of the minutes of June 18th, have you read them? I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of June 18th. Planning Board has written.
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry, who said it?
Jim.
Thank you. Any discussion, any adjustments, any corrections? All in favor, do a voice vote. Jim?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes, but I'm not voting.
I'm sorry, thank you, Tom. Dennis?
Yes.
I was not voting.
Okay, thank you.
I think I was not voting.
Okay, thanks. The Chair votes yes. Moving on. A note from me. For the sake of transparency and clarification, there is an attached addendum to this agenda. In a nutshell, it reads, "This is from MMA Legal Services Manual for Local Land Use Appeals Boards. Public participation general. Unless a meeting has been advertised as a public hearing, members of the public may attend and listen, but have no right to ask questions or offer comment." I'm not being mean or anything. That is rules. That's on page 35. On page 44, in particular, Tom, you asked about meetings. And that is, again, from MMA Legal Services, and it explains if someone is out and misses a number of meetings or particular meetings, that they may or may not be eligible for a vote. If they are eligible, there is a way and a procedure to do it, and it has to be followed. But you asked me about it last week. I wanted to give you that so you would have it and know about it. Okay?
I can't hear you.
Thank you. Okay, go right on to all business. Could we have Brad Jones? Kim Moran? And if you would unmute yourselves.
Unmuted, if you could hear me.
I can hear you.
Great, thanks.
I seem to have lost... Ben, where is Ben?
Hi.
Let me go through a page. Oh, hi, Ben, you're on my second page. There we go. All right. LLC 604 H Road, map 224 lot 026. A conditional use application. 18-acre solar array. Into review section 6.63.7. Standards applicable to conditional use. Yes. Before I start, Dennis has a question.
I would like to make a statement. It was brought out, misses to Soltage, rest of the planning, last night at the Slatman's meeting, that when I was doing, talking to Soltage about the town getting some subsidy on their electricity, could be considered as a bribe. And that surely wasn't my intent. If anybody researches and goes back to the very first meeting we had, Soltage brought this out that it's quite common with these solar arrays, that the town gets some kind of a benefit by it. And that was the end of the conversation. And then when the... That was back in March, I believe. And the Slatman shut the Planning Board down for two and a half months. And it was brought back up. I brought it back up to Soltage. And I set up a phone conversation between the superintendent and Soltage through Kenny Paul. So I was kind of offended by the innuendos last night. And I want to be very clear. Soltage told the Planning Board that this is a standard practice. And there was nothing negative or implied that I was getting any benefit out of this personally. I just wanted to clarify that for the whole Planning Board. I thank you.
Everybody is satisfied with that? Then Jim, you agree with that, yes?
Absolutely, yep. Understands that. We're here for a conditional use approval of our application, and that alone before the Board. Correct, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. What we want to do, make sure we have everything we need and go through with it. Now, Ben, you want to step in here? We were looking for one piece, one correction, I believe.
At the last time this was in front of the Planning Board, was at a public hearing. And at that public hearing, there was a comment made regarding the accuracy of the survey. Questions about where lines were shown on the plan. And I think it'd be appropriate for the applicant's rep to talk a little bit more about that. We did get a revised survey, or a corrected survey, I should say, with some additional information. But I think that was the main point of clarification coming out of the Board's last discussion.
You want to fill us in?
Okay, if I speak?
Yes.
Yep, great, thanks, Ben. Appreciate you bringing that up, and that is correct. Through conversations with the abutters and with our survey, there was a mistake that was made through interpretation of the deeds and the data. And our surveyor has since made the corrections, reissued the plan, and staked the lines and the corners appropriately, and has presented that to the abutters. And what we are presenting now, and I've dropped off a few paper copies to the town, and they have PDFs, is the corrected version of that survey.
Thank you. Can you have those in-house? Very good.
We've got them in-house.
Excellent, excellent. All right, so if there are no objections, I'd like to go through the conditional use checklist. See, yep, Jim, go.
Sure, I just want to make a brief statement that I want to appreciate the town for reviewing the application and considering the project. I believe we've got a good project for the town and a good application, a complete application. So we're hopeful that the Board, as they go through the standards, if they have any questions, we'll be certainly able to address those. But I believe we've got a complete application. And we're hopeful that, as this goes through, that, you know, at the end, the Board will make a determination regarding this conditional use, so we can move forward with the project. So I thank you very much for your time.
You're very welcome, you're very welcome. And I will say, except for that one issue, that what we have has been very clear, very good. And I personally appreciate the Zoom sidewalk. What do we call it? Not a Zoom... Well, it was a Zoom sidewalk, but it was a...
Kind of a drone.
Drone. Two new technologies. Zoom meets drone, or drone meets Zoom. Quite interesting, anyway. Thank you. Okay, so...
Glad we could offer that.
Okay, Board members, we're going to go through this now. And we're going to start with conditional use. If you have your conditional use checklist with you, Board members, so you can go down with me. Leslie, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. Number one, we're not in the shoreline district. So conditional use, 4.3.2. Proposed use is stated on the land chart, section 2.7, as a conditional use. Yes, no? Unreasonably, the condition of permit, the purpose, the proposed project does not unreasonably interfere with existing recreation and navigational use, nor unreasonably alter the scenic and aesthetic qualities. Leslie?
I just have a question. If it's not in the shoreline district, why are we going through these questions?
Yeah.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow along.
Yes.
Well, there are several things in there, if you'll see it. It does not unreasonably alter the scenic and aesthetic qualities of the area.
No, I'm asking if this section of questions are related to shoreline district, why are we going through the questions? Because the project's not in the shoreline zone.
May I?
Yeah, Tom.
In the zoning ordinance book, I think this should be on page 88. Standards applicable to conditional use.
And if you go to this sheet, 6.6.3.4, you'll see the standards listed in section 6.6.3.7. It's on page 2 of 3.
My citation was for the zoning ordinance page.
Okay, well, this is from our worksheet. Leslie, do you have it?
I have it, yeah. No, I did not. It's just a question.
Yeah, okay, well, let's skip over that. Some of the things in there did seem to, you know, have something to do with it. But we'll skip right over and go to 6.3.7. Dennis?
Under 6.3 and 6.6.3.3, under the conditional use permit, I think we have to go through all of that. Maybe not the shoreline thing, I don't have a disagreement with that. But I think 6.3, conditional use permits, is where we have to start.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ken and ask for his guidance on this.
Yeah, just watch out where it's talked about the existing conditional use. That doesn't apply. And everything on 6.6.3.3, we've been through with the applicant already. So if you went to as long as page 88 and the...
Ken?
Yeah.
You're going to have to get closer to your speaker because you're in a barrel. Thank you.
Is that any better?
Much.
Probably if I don't yell, it's even better. We've already been doing most of it with the applicant. If we... The staff has tried to the Board. So if you start at 6.6.3.4, that will be good.
All right. We'll do that. Everyone, 6.6.3.4. And it says, "The standards listed in section 6.6.3.4.7 are reviewed and found that A. The use will not have an adverse impact on spawning ground fish, aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife habitat." Yes, no, and A. Can I hear from others? Okay. B. The use will conserve short, current, visual, as well as actual, and access to bodies of water.
Not applicable.
And A, thank you.
Joyce?
Excuse me, Jim?
Yeah, question. As you go through the standards, is it required that the Board make a decision whether they meet the standards or not? Or is it just one Board member can weigh in on it? Or does a vote need to be made for each standard?
We don't need a vote. We need, you know, if two members come up with a yes or no, we'll discuss it and we'll come up with one answer.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay.
And sorry to jump in, Joyce. This is Ben Smith from North Star. One thing that could help with the discussion as you go through this is the analysis that we've prepared in the staff memo. That is dated June 23rd, that Sarah Delguzzo and the North Star office put together. So I'm not sure if you want to just kind of work through the ordinance document, which is what you're using, or if you want to look at it with some comments that Planning has provided. But we went through those conditional use standards as well.
All right, so the Board, we have a... Do you have a copy? Do you all have a copy of North Star letter dated June 23rd? It's an eight-page letter. It would have been in your package last week.
Joyce, maybe you just read the comments when you read the... As you go on A, B, C, just read North Star's comments because some of those went out via email, and some people are having problems with their emails.
Okay, thank you, that helps an awful lot. All right, that being the case, I'm going to turn over the reading of the standards. To... Leslie, you have it in front of you?
I do not.
You do not. The standard sheet, this one?
Well, I had the standard sheet, but I don't have the email.
That's what I want you to have, okay? I would like you to read that. Give me one minute to get to the... To that portion of the letter. Okay. You read the question, and I'm going to tell you what we got from our planner. All right?
Okay. All right, C, "The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan."
This pointing to what we have. "This project does not conflict with the planning and the objectives of the comprehensive plan." Mark it on your thing, please.
Yes. All right, D.
D, traffic... You read the question.
"Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and the traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance."
"The applicant should show locations and dimensions of existing driveways within 200 feet of the site. Applicant should explain relationship with existing driveways and plan to access. Applicant should provide details on how to treat the portion of the existing access that appears to be abandoned. The ALTA ACS Land Title Survey shows a right-of-way granted to Frederick A. Poirier and Barbara A. Poirier, map 223 lot 1, described as a right-of-way over land of one George L. Pillsbury, and over land now or formerly of the said Robert B. Lovejoy to the above described premises. No actual location of the right-of-way is given. Applicant should show how the right-of-way will be maintained. And should provide copies of existing comment and restriction pertaining to easements."
There's another memo after that one, Joyce. I think you're on the prior one. And I know you're having problems with your email, so you might not have got it. So I guess after Leslie reads, Ben can chime in with his.
I think Ben should do that.
I would be happy to do that. And the relevant comment for traffic access to the site is that upon completion of the project, the site will not generate regular or periodic traffic. Visits to the solar array will only be occasional for inspection, maintenance, and operation purposes.
Keep going, Leslie.
Okay, E. "The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations."
We did not see a FEMA floodplain map in the submission, but the site does not appear to be in a floodplain.
F. "Adequate provision for the disposal of wastewater and solid waste has been made."
And as proposed by the applicant, the solar array will not be generating, storing, or discharging any wastewater or solid waste.
Four?
Couple.
Oh, okay.
And there's a comment Sarah had written about the applicant should show proposed development, how the proposed development will provide for adequate disposal of solid waste for many maintenance or inspections during the site.
G. "Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made."
Before we go to that one, Leslie, Jim?
Yeah, are we just going through the standard? Is the Board taking any discussion or making any determination on these standards, one by one? Or are they just reading them and then Ben commenting? I guess I'm a bit confused. I thought the Board would be discussing and making a determination whether we met these standards.
We know from what we're going through right now, whether you have or have not.
Okay.
Make sure that you have. And if there is a question on any of them, because Ben and Sarah, our planners, have gone through this for us.
Understood.
We've through it. And for the most part, we know what's going on.
Okay.
We just don't want... That's why we have this checklist.
Understood.
Gives us a complete look at anything. We don't want to have to come back to you or have someone come to us and say, "What about this?" Because we missed it. We're just crossing Ts and dotting our i's. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Joyce?
Yes, hold on, Leslie.
I would ask, as we go through this, regarding Ben's answers, that we say yes, no, and A.
We still need to do that.
So we can have it on a checklist for our records.
I've actually been doing that on mine, so... Okay. So Leslie, you want to start again with the... I believe you're at...
I'm on G.
G.
Yeah, all right. "Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made."
There isn't going to be any, correct? So the answer is not applicable.
H. "A stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed."
And according to our review and based on the applicant's submission, the applicant stating that it's designed so that the post-development drainage patterns are going to be... They're going to mimic the existing conditions. And as discussed previously, I think it was at the public hearing, the DEP does not consider the solar array developed area, but it's a meadow condition. So there's very little impervious associated with this.
All right, so stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm. What would the Board say?
And A, essentially.
Thank you.
I would agree, and A.
All right, there we go.
I, "Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made."
Steve? Soil erosion and sedimentation are really not going to be affected once the digging has been done for the post. That's the only thing you're going to have, and that's not really going to be eroded or anything like that, correct?
That's correct. We did submit an erosion and sediment control plan that shows perimeter controls around the site during construction. So that has been addressed. "Any and all ground disturbance will be mulched and stabilized prior to any rain events." So, you know, once the site is fully developed and revegetated, there won't be any erosion and sediment.
So that's a yes. That's a yes.
All right, J. "There's adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection services."
So there is no demand for domestic or fire suppression purposes. And as noted in the applicant's comments at the last meeting, there will be fire department access to the site through the gate.
So it's and A.
It's and A. And there will be a knock box.
Exactly. That's the term for that access.
Correct.
That's right, that is correct. That will be on site, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, K. "The provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to the neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development, such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like."
Joyce?
Yes, Dennis?
I would like to just ask... Ask from the property lines and on the south end, what you're going to cut, the footage on that. Is that all laid out on the new plan?
That is, that is laid out on the site design. It reflects, I think, 1.7 acres. There's like 1.3 acres where there's going to be some clearing of some existing trees onsite. Very little along the perimeter for shadowing. And then again, up in the, I guess, western side, there's a little bit that's going to be taken out for shadowing.
Right.
And that's on the...
We've talked about that, right?
Yes.
We... I don't remember now what meeting it was. On the north end, it was talked... Said there'll be 10 or 20 feet from the property line. And that's all set and granite now?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm... Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you mean by set and granite. I mean, the clearing, referring to the clearing?
Oh, talking on the north side where the big pine are.
Oh, right. Yeah, no, I don't think there's any clearing up there.
No, but your setback for your solar array is what we talked about.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
And at the time, it was said to be 10 or 20 feet. And I said, I would like to have that clarified.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, the solar, the fence will be, you know, just around the perimeter of the array and along the northern line, it will be setback. I'd have to look, the design plans, that will probably be submitted in the building permit. The northern line, I don't remember, I don't believe the setback will be, won't interfere with the trees, so it'll be at least 10 feet off the tree line. I don't have the exact measurements of what the.
I guess my question about that is, looking down the road, the way the site exists now, being 10 feet off the property line is not an issue. But 25 years from now, if that property is developed, I thought the setback from the property line, myself personally, should be more than 10 feet.
Right. I don't know if there is a property line. I mean, we're within the easement area of Mr. Doyle and his property line. You're talking about the property up by the auto salvage?
The north end where the big pine are, yeah.
Yeah. So there is no actual property line along that northern edge. Because the Doyle property continues from the field, over the ridge, through those big pines, and up behind where the salvage yard is. So there is no actual property line.
He's looking at the lease line, probably.
Oh, the lease line?
Or the leases, maybe.
Right. I'm sorry. Yeah. The distance, I don't know if there is an exact distance from the lease line, lease area to the fence line. I would think it'd be at least 10 feet.
That's fine. I stand corrected, Ken. You're right, what I meant.
You say that again, Dennis, please.
I said, you were right, Ken. I stand corrected. I just hope this is recorded.
Yeah, and I know, I see every board member smiling. We got this taken care of. All right, you all set with that?
Yeah. What was the answer on that, Joyce? Did we get to it?
That would be a yes, isn't it?
Buffer strip.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. L, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met.
Yes.
Yes.
And archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected.
N/A.
N/A.
Okay. Okay, now going on. We've had the public hearing, yes? Notifications were all sent out. The applicant and the butters all got their notification by mail. And code enforcement and municipal offices have been notified. With all that being said, shall we move on?
Joyce, say one thing?
Yes.
This past week, Brett and I met with the butters, the Higgins and the Waldrons, and we talked about access. And we talked about planting, some additional plantings along the access road. So there would be a visual buffer of the access road from the Waldrons and a planting buffer between the Waldrons and the Higgins. So, you know, that is also in play. And we've discussed that with those butters.
That was very nice. We asked you to speak to them, and I'm very glad you did.
Did you move the road? Did you agree to move the road?
I think they've agreed to where the road will be placed.
Okay.
Okay. With all this information at hand, what does the planning board wish to do at this point?
You want to just check with North Star and see if they had any outstanding issues with the rest of their stuff?
Yes, we do.
We do not have any other outstanding issues. As you may note, we also reviewed this as a site plan application. This is not advertised or posted as a site plan, but it did give us the opportunity to go through the project. And it does meet, in our opinion, all of those standards as well. I think that to the extent that the applicant is stating that there's going to be additional plantings shown, those should be on the version of the plan that the planning board ultimately has on file at the office. And it should reflect the statements made at the meeting this evening.
Right.
And we could do that. We could certainly update the planting plan. I believe we submitted one. This was a new development this week, but we can certainly update the landscaping plan and provide copies of that, digital and paper, to the town.
So my suggestion would be that we get all these submissions into Ken this week, and we can take an action a week from tonight.
Yeah.
Providing that Ken has everything in place.
Could we ask if the board can make a decision with, you know, a condition? So we don't tie up the board's time in a follow-up meeting? That the application be, it seems like it's heading towards approval, so be approved with the condition that these be presented?
Leslie? I'm okay with that. Tom?
I'm just wondering if that would be in the form of garbage that would stem from the audio of this meeting? Which would essentially be our findings of fact for this project? And I have another quick question. What is Ken or the board's thinking on the performance guarantees? We talked, I don't recall that we've talked with Jim about that, I'm not sure.
I think early on.
Is that part of the standards? I'm sorry, I'm not.
We, early on, we talked about it, Jim.
Okay.
Happens in 20, 25 years when you're gone. We want to be able to, we want to be able to, you know, bring this back to the meadow that it was. Is there going to be?
Escrow.
A bunch of stuff there, you know? Saltage goes away, God forbid. And we had talked about it before.
Sure. Well, we certainly want to follow all standards that the conditional use application requires. So if, you know, with their, if that is part of the conditional use standards, we will certainly meet those conditions accordingly. So.
I think we want to, we want to guarantee.
Hi, this is Brett. I'm sorry, I dialed in late.
Yes, hello, Brett, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm up near Jackman, and it was hard finding a Wi-Fi spot here. I apologize. Well, definitely, I think if you could add a condition with your vote tonight, that, that a condition that we have a decommissioning escrow, I believe is the proper term. Ben, if you could weigh in on this, similar to what we've done in some other towns, a decommissioning escrow is, I believe that's a proper condition, and that'd be fine?
Right, I, if I may be.
Ben, go ahead.
It would be. Sorry about that. Some background noise there. The, it would be a fine condition of approval to have a requirement for a decommissioning guarantee for the removal of the infrastructure in the event that the applicant is not able to do that. That would basically give the town a fund in order to carry out that removal work. And if I could suggest some wording, it would be a condition of approval, one, to require a decommissioning guarantee in place with the town prior to building permits.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Ken, please chime in on here.
Brett, what have you done in the past for other communities with the same size of facility as far as amount?
Yeah, so thanks, Ken. There's a, there's a formula that we can either, we'll submit a formula to the town and that comes up with a number. It's about 50 to $100,000 that we can set aside and based on third-party review, that we can share with the town. And that's set aside to ensure that the site is brought back to its original state. And so there's a kind of a formula, there is a formula, it's third-party reviewed, that we'd submit to the town to set the basis for that decommissioning.
Yeah, that sounds good with me. Ben, you're good with that, 50 to 100,000?
Yeah, and I think that the exact amount would have to be acceptable to the town. That does not need to be set this evening.
Correct.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
My question about that would be, this exact dollar amount has to be accepted by the town. You mean the planning board?
It's often town administration. The board would review the plan, and it's certainly appropriate to put a condition on this use, but the exact amount and the form of that guarantee, whether it's a cash escrow or a letter of credit, that's generally town administrative determination.
Well, the problem, the problem with that is, as far as I'm concerned, is the consistency. Because when we've had escrow accounts that we've established in the past, the planning board with a town rate, has set that rate that's approved by the town, town administration. But, for example, with a gravel pit, to reclaim a gravel pit, we require like $1,000 per acre. And that's been a standard that we've done with the gravel pits, and that's just for reclaiming. That's not bringing back, like, what we're talking about for removal and stuff. I.
So Dennis?
I don't feel comfortable moving forward with this unless everything, and I won't use the word granite this time, unless everything's estined stone exactly how we're going to be. I want to know, if I'm going to vote yes on this, then I want everything exactly how it's going to be out in front.
Tom?
My suggestion would be that at the next meeting, after a conversation with Kenny and Jim, that the board would be given a recommendation as to how to proceed in terms of the sum of this, and we would vote on it at our next meeting. And the other question to answer maybe now is, it has to be language somewhere such that our review.
Hang on, Brett, Jim, hang on.
That our review of the standards tonight and our recitation of those probably on the next meeting in a sentence, you don't have to be redone, would stand as our findings of fact for saltage. The audio from tonight would be worked up with our secretary's help to reflect them as being findings of fact, which we've been asked to start to generate on this meeting. Mr. Recap, then, Ken and Jim would provide us the recommendation next week on the letter of credit issue or the escrow account, and we can vote on that issue alone from.
I think we can handle finding of facts, Tom. That's not a bad thing. We can do that. Jim, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was wondering if it's possible if the town could make a decision on whether we've met the standards? And is regarding the escrow account, could that be a separate decision at the next meeting? I think, you know, the, the.
Well, actually.
The application before the board is our conditional use application. And I didn't know if the town could make a decision whether we met those standards.
Well, actually, Jim, under what we've just been through, the 6.6, 6.3, 7, if we were to go on to 6.6, 6.3, 8, conditions attached to a conditional use may include, but are not limited to several different things, types of vegetation, setbacks, types of construction, et cetera, I'm not going into it. And 6.6, 6.3, 9 is performance guarantees may be required in the following terms, security bonds, irrevocable letters of credit, or escrow accounts, which brings us right to where we are right now.
Okay.
So it is part of the conditional use that we're talking about. Now, I think, I will go out on a limb here tonight. I'm feeling a little brave. I don't think you're going to have, Ken, don't get those worry lines going, it's okay. It really is. You know, I think that the board is safer of what you're doing, but we want to have everything done. And we need to see everything taken care of properly. We've got a board member who's asking for one question, one question. We have Mr. Cashin asking another. Leslie, where are you standing on this?
My only concern, you know, and this was from initially, was the disposal of the panels at the end of the project. Because, you know, as we talked about when Saltage first come in, there is no good way to dispose of these things because of the chemicals and minerals that are in the panels. So I think setting up some kind of a decommission escrow kind of makes me feel a whole lot better about that aspect, because no one has an answer to that problem.
Right. Mr. Crowley, how do you feel on this? Jim, you have to unmute yourself. The little thingy on the side there. Push the button.
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. I have to agree with what she said about the decommissioning. And I think that is a very, very important thing that we need to see before we can continue.
Okay. Well, I think we have a, I think we know where we stand at this point. We are going to have you come back next week. I will remind you, with all due respect, that if we were having regular meetings, we'd be seeing you in two weeks, not one week. So, COVID, Ken?
Ben's waving his hand. Ben's waving his.
Yeah, I.
Hello, Ben.
Hi. I wanted to just clarify that the condition of approval that we just discussed was for a decommissioning guarantee, which is different from a performance guarantee. The performance guarantee in the ordinance is established to make sure that the construction of improvements are done. established to make sure that the construction of improvements are done per the design. And they're done with quality workmanship so that the the improvements, which are typically required for roads or utilities or other kinds of infrastructure, those are the things that you see a performance guarantee for are done properly. The decommissioning guarantee that we're talking about is different in that it's gonna be up to the applicant to install the solar panels per the the project and the building permits. And that decommissioning guarantee is money or some other form, a surety that will be held by the town in the event that the applicant is unable to remove the infrastructure at the end of its useful lifespan. It's I I I think just from my experience in other communities, and I I know I'm kind of the new guy here and acting, but in my experience in other communities, the amount of that guarantee and the form of the guarantee are more administrative work that town staff takes care of as opposed to a review of the performance standards and approval criteria that is a very much a board direction. So I just wanted to make that very clear so that you know, in my review, with this condition, the the board could consider voting on on the application tonight. It's obviously up to you to make a decision if if that's a place you want to go. But I I think that with the review of the conditions, excuse me, the review of the standards along with this condition, that's where we are tonight.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Thanks.
My issue is, as a longtime resident of this town, we have an area in town that the town took for back taxes is very highly toxic. And the town has been stuck with this piece of property for forty years. And at the time, it wasn't any big deal forty years ago. Well, it's a big deal now, and twenty-five years from now, we don't know what they're gonna come out with. That changes all the time. And I have said this before, by decisions, we have to look into the future the best we can. And if we vote on this tonight, I say I'm voting no. But it's up to the board whether they want to do it or not.
Ken?
Dennis, are you looking for is a number for the guarantee, right?
Yeah.
The form of how.
Yes.
Yeah, and and usually we we have in the past had that discussed that the planning board agreed on it to move forward. We've had horrible luck with lines of credit, though.
So what is?
Guys, we just lost you for a minute. We'll be back.
If I'm listening to, if I'm hearing Jim correctly, they they would like a a vote on our findings of fact. The question being, did the project get approval upon the recitation of the standards applicable there? But Joyce, Leslie was helping us read through. And and then we just break out that approval of the means of the decommissioning escrow and the performance guarantee next week after Kenny and Jim have had time to offer us some solutions. But I I think I would be comfortable in in voting that Soltage has its findings of fact record as as would be evident in the audio of our meeting tonight. Not to beat this to death, but I would feel comfortable in taking a vote, although I'm the alternate tonight, so I can't. I would be comfortable if the board went ahead and voted to allow things to proceed with Soltage on this project.
Thank you for your it's much appreciated, Tom. Much appreciated. Gavin, you've been quiet. I know you've read through. When you mute yourself, Gavin. I I know you've read through the information on this and I just want to find out where you are.
Yeah, I think it's a good project. I wonder perhaps we should have a performance guarantee as well as a disguise. Say something happened during the twenty-five duration of the project, would the decommissioning guarantee cover that loss say through a violent storm or or bankruptcy of the company?
Jim? Anything you can say to that?
Sure, I'm gonna, I'm not sure if Brett is still on the line. I know he he have maybe have more knowledge. I don't know if he's on mute, if there's a way to unmute Brett.
Yeah, I'm here, Jim. I'm here, Jim. I hello.
Great. I don't know if Brett will have a comment on as far as how Soltage handles their performance guarantees and their decommissioning guarantees.
Yeah, I think, you know, there are two very different things as Ben has pointed out. And typically, we don't we don't contract with performance guarantees for these projects. I think, Ben, you would concur with that because there is no no risk to the town whether we perform as a solar array and produce electricity or not. We're just leasing land. But we do have a sincere obligation to return the land back to its original state, which we take very seriously, which is why we do prescribe to a decommissioning bond. And we have with every project we've ever every town, every project we've worked with. So, yeah, I I'm not, the performance guarantee is confusing to me. I'm not sure that that doesn't, I wasn't aware of that as a condition. And I'm not, it's an unusual precedent. The decommissioning bond we're fully on board with. And as Ben said, these are normal conditions that we work out with the town. Third part, they can be third-party reviewed so that, Ken, your your concern about a fair number is properly assessed, given what we know as well as with, you know, the the disposal of the waste. So I think that is a is a very reasonable condition. But a performance guarantee, I'm I'm that, I'm having a little trouble with that one as a as a as a standard. And I don't know, Ben, if you can chime in in terms of, you know.
We're gonna go to Ken right now.
I I'm okay with no performance guarantee because if it does, if it gets half-built, we're gonna use the decommission bond to take it down. And and that would be my only concern is that it's constructed, half-constructed, and things happen and Soltage disappears. We'll use the decommission bond to take it down, I would imagine. So I'm okay without the performance bond.
Yeah, that's what I would.
Does that sound right, Ben?
Yes, that I concur with that.
All right.
Someone please consider moving the question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The question's been moved by whom?
Tom.
By Tom, thank you, Tom. All right. We have before us Soltage Conditional Use Application for an eighteen-acre solar array on hundred and four H Road. Lot two two four, sorry, map two two four, lot zero two six. All in favor by roll call. Their conditional use.
That they're in compliance with the.
They are in compliance with the
Standards.
Standards.
Was, did somebody make a motion in second?
No.
Not yet.
The the the, there really hasn't, there hasn't been any motion for forward.
No.
All right.
I said, I'm looking for.
And and so I'll make a motion if I can get it right.
Talk slow so I can write it down.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use application with a condition that there is an escrow account. Escrow. What am I looking for?
Decommissioning.
Commissioning guarantee account set up. And I I don't know how we do dollar amount.
To be determined.
We need to determine and approve by Land Use.
Office.
Office.
I guess we leave it at that.
Yeah, Ben has some good language that we've used. But you're Dennis, I'm in agreement with with what you said principally that
Okay. Reasonable, okay. Thank you, Brett. I need us, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
I'll second. Is there further discussion? Okay, by roll call. Jim Crowley. Jim, unmute yourself, please. Jim, unmute yourself. Deb, please help Jim unmute his computer.
I'm all set.
Thank you.
I do learn fast. I I vote yes.
Thank you. Leslie?
Yeah.
Gavin?
All abstained. I haven't been at the previous meetings.
Dennis?
Yes.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. You have the, you've met the conditions. Very good. Deal with Ken. And we do also want to, yeah, Ken. Ken?
I'm I'm okay. Keep going.
We want the updated plan, please.
For the landscaping?
Yes, for everything, for the road, for the landscaping, every updated plan you have. That's what we want to have. Make sure they get to Ken, please.
Sure, as part of the building permit application.
As part of this, we want to make sure we have all of the pertinent plans.
Okay.
You know, Ken? Ken?
Final plan, have a signature block on the final plan. Block for the planning boards.
On the site plan, I mean, I provided a site plan to you, and the only thing that we would update at this point for this conditional use application would be the landscaping plan. So we could, I could provide you a new landscaping plan to show the additional, the changes in landscaping based on the butter. So and I know that Brett will be submitting, will be submitting a building permit application. So as as part of this conditional use application, I believe the only plan we'd be updating would be the landscaping plan.
The final site plan, just have a signature block on it.
Okay.
So I mean, we're talking serious money, so I just want to get the signatures on it and bring in a couple of copies. We don't need my lives or anything like that. Then you'll have it as well as us.
Sure. So you just need a signature block on the site plan?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll be good. Then you do, Ken, and we'll be good to go.
How many copies of the site plan, of the site design plan with the signature block?
Three.
Copy? Okay. And the same thing with the updated landscaping plan? Three copies of the updated landscaping plan?
Yes, just one of those is fine.
Okay, very good.
You can get all that information from Kenny, okay?
Okay, very good.
Definitely. Very good. Then you'll be in touch with Kenny?
Yep.
This bad as pulling teeth, most, but not quite. Thank you.
So we, so we will not need to come before the planning board again, is that correct?
If you, you've got to bring in that so we can sign it.
Sure, no, I understand. But to be on the next agenda, we won't need to be on the next agenda. The board has decided that we've met this conditional use application, so.
We've approved it.
Yes, okay. So yeah, no, absolutely. We will provide the the necessary plans to Ken in the coming weeks.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your patience, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Doing something like this in in the world of land and time of COVID isn't easy. We do appreciate your patience.
Absolutely.
See you guys.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We look forward to working.
Will we receive a document regarding the approval of this conditional use? Some sort of legal document? Ken, how does that?
We'll work on a findings of fact. And we'll have a conditional use certificate, but I really want to get you a copy of the plan all signed.
Sure, yeah, we'll get you that in the coming weeks.
Yeah. Ben, do you have anything outstanding with this one?
Uh, no, Soltage is all set.
Great.
You guys can enjoy the rest of the evening. There you go.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for calling in, Brett. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, going on to Martella Estates, Arnie Martell, seven hundred and sixty Youngs Ridge Road, map two one seven, lots zero two eight dash zero three zero. An application for an eighteen lot subdivision. The review of the preliminary plan application. Brad Jones, you want to join us?
Yes.
Jim, you're here, I believe. Unmute.
Thank you.
Thank you. And please excuse me, I am not going to try your name tonight.
That's fine.
Okay. Brad or Jim, you want to let us know where you are?
Probably want to hear from Brad on this one.
Yeah, sure. Well, I'm Brad Jones. I'm with the Jones and Beach Engineers. And I'm here tonight with Arnie Martell. We're here for our hearing on the preliminary plan for the Youngs Ridge Road project. Project involves eighteen new lots. We went through. Uh, we went through kind of the geometry and the, and the plans a little bit, uh, during the last meeting. But I thought maybe tonight, uh, we did get comments from Ben from North Star. Maybe we could go through some of those comments and, uh, and finalize that. And then we would like to submit a revised set of plans that would, would cover all the items that, uh, that are, that are in that, um, letter from Ben. And this is a report that he wrote back in, um, so that would have been on, uh, June 16th was when, uh, Ben, uh, gave us those comments. So, um, does everyone have that?
No.
North Star, okay.
Is that distributed, Joyce?
I'm looking right now. I've got, I've got several dates, uh, going back as far as February, so let me go through the file.
It's the only one I've got. February 4th, 20. Could Jim tell us what, uh, what the date would be on this?
It'd be June 16th.
Did that get distributed, Joyce, you know? Does anybody else have a copy?
That's what I'm looking for.
I'm, uh, I'm looking at one of the members that didn't pick up their packet and there is one in here. Uh, June 16th memo.
In this week's packet. I've got February.
I don't have it.
In my packet, I've got February 4th. I do not have it either.
I think, uh, I, I, it was also mailed or emailed out as well.
I mean, if you want it, I can go through it generally and, uh, I just, I was really just wanting to hit some of the, some of the points. We are going to respond back to that memo.
I, I think what we're going to have to do, because we don't seem to have it, is, uh, between you, Ben, I assume you have a copy of it.
I do.
Okay. Between the two of you, you're going to have to share with us.
One other, just sense of place here. The, the, uh, packet that would pertain to what, uh, Brad is speaking to us about is dated May 21, 20. Is that correct?
I thought it, this would be June 16th.
June 26.
The, uh, June 16th is, uh, Ben's letter. I'm, I'm curious, uh, the packet that we're discussing tonight is dated May 21 from Brad. Is that correct?
My, my comments in that June 16th memo were based on the May 21st submission from Joneson Beach.
Thank you.
Okay, um, well, let me get started and, um, we go down through the memo, the, like I say, I'm only going to hit some of the highlights. We will send back a letter, it'll probably be tomorrow, Monday.
Okay.
With a new revised set of plans, uh, to address all these items. So, um, uh, one of the items that mentioned, uh, a site walk on the site. And, uh, we have done two sitewalks already. And, um, would like to, uh, I know the board was out there twice, it was a, a public meeting. And we had the road staked at that point and we had all the ponds located and all the lot lines located. And, um, we're able to, you know, provide a pretty good, uh, you know, any questions answered as far as the, uh, the project itself. So I feel that, uh, we shouldn't be all set with that, but I just want to clarify that, the items.
We're getting an awful lot of background noise from somewhere. Anyway.
Madam Chair, this is Dan, can I interrupt?
I'm sorry?
This is Dan, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Yes, Dan.
It would be extremely helpful if you are not actively speaking, if you can mute your microphone. That's where we're getting all of the background noise from. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan is our, um, host, one of our hosts. So, uh, when he comes in like that, he's speaking as our technical advisor, guys. Brad, as far as sitewalks go, we've been out there. I think we know the property. And I feel this board has agreed that another sitewalk is not necessary.
Okay. Uh, that's all, I just wanted to bring that up, make sure we, we responded properly. Um, if we go back down through the list, um, one of the items they want, uh, Ben would like to see some grading on some of the lots that have some slopes on them. So, uh, we're working on that now, like I say, that plan will. And what it's going to do is right now on our plans, we do show the house location, the driveway locations, um, and the septic reserve area and the well location. So we're gonna, uh, and go back and do some grading and if it's a walkout and show the contours and show the contours of the, of the, of the driveways and the culvert and that type of thing. And so that'll be on the next plan for those lots that are on steep slope. And it'll give a good idea of how a lot of these lots are going to look similar. So it'll give a good idea what the rest of the lots, uh, the layout of the rest of the lots. Uh, so you'll see that on, on the next set of plans and as long as there's no questions about that, I can, I can move on.
Let's move on.
Okay, um, uh, there were a couple of questions on solid waste. And, um, as far as like, uh, when is, uh, the, the trash pickup basically for the homes? And, and for these 18 new homes are going to be, um, probably either private hauler that, that'll, uh, remove that trash and bring that to the active landfill. Or, or the homeowner can opt to, uh, bring that, uh, solid waste to the, to the landfill as well. So, uh, that's also spelled out in our SLOTA permit with DEP. Uh, very detailed and, um, but, but we, but we, once again, I've answered that on the, um, on the response, like, letter that you're going to get. Um, if we move on, um, down, it's, uh, item 10.6 and, uh, bullet number four. And there was, um, a question in the subdivision regulations. It talks about like a 50 foot buffer around the, uh, entrance of the subdivision and, um, on the frontage. And, um, we, and it calls for a wooded buffer. Uh, if you read on the regulation, it, it does talk about if it's a existing and it's, and it's, and it's a meadow at this point or not, or not wooded, that, that the, the buffer could remain as a meadow buffer. Um, we, and the other part of that is they want the houses and the, and the look of the subdivision not to distract, uh, be close to the road. Uh, so I wanted to go through that, the, we actually have three lots that are abut Youngs Ridge Road. And, um, the first lot on the right is 291, is going to be 170 feet down gradient, which would mean below the Youngs Ridge Road and away from Youngs Ridge Road, not 170 feet, 70 feet below, but 170 feet away. And, um, and so that house is going to be pretty far away to, um, you know, be any kind of visibility to the street. Um, the other, uh, lot is going to be, um, the Horn property. And the Horn property itself is, uh, the house is already established, so that house will remain in its current location. And then the next lot over is, um, lot 281. And that is going to be 120 feet away from Youngs Ridge Road and also down gradient below the, below the road. So, um, so the bottom line is we'd like to not have that 50 foot buffer. Uh, we do have building envelopes and, um, and not have, have to, you know, vegetate or, uh, you know, put a wooded buffer in there. So once again, that's spelled out in the, in the, um, in the letter that you'll be receiving, so. And if I move along, the, um, most anything else. Yeah, I guess if we go back to the.
Right. Okay, this, uh, right there, I'm going to stop you Brad.
Ben, I just want to get your reactions to what we've just heard.
So they were in response to, you know, correspondence you've had.
Sure, I, I, that sounds like a reasonable response. The, the section of ordinance that, uh, the applicant's rep, uh, Mr. Jones was referencing, uh, it does call for, um, maintenance of a wooded buffer strip. And as I noted in, in the memo, it, it's been a hay field for a really long time. And I, I think that the, the intent of that section of the ordinance was to, again, minimize the visibility of new homes in a field. And if the applicant is, uh, suggesting that, that, uh, they're proposing to minimize the visual impact, uh, through number one, the distance of the homes from the road. And number two, using the, uh, topography of the site to minimize the visibility of the homes from Youngs Ridge. Um, but it, it sounds like a reasonable approach. I, I'd like to, uh, you know, take a look at the plan again, uh, as well as the, uh, written response. But, you know, it, it seems like a reasonable way to address it.
So we can go forward from here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, Brad, I just want to make sure we're getting absolute completeness on this. So if, if we're, you know, kind of digging down, that's why. So you want to continue?
Sure, um, actually, actually the last item, uh, I mean, there's, there's quite a few items, but like you say, most of them were, um, you know, responded with this. You know, we, I don't think we have to get too far in depth with it. But the last item was 10.16. And it's got to do with the street design standards. And, uh, it was actually the last item in that section. And, um, it regards the turnaround at the end of the street. And, um, at this point, both roads are designed with a hammerhead. And, um, we did, we do have a, a paved road, it's going to be private and it's going to be 22 feet in width. So it's a little wider than, uh, some of the roads in town. I think the regulation can actually be down to 18 feet. So, um, so it'll be 22 feet. And, um, we would like to re-stick with the hammerhead instead of a cul-de-sac at the end of, um, the road, uh, the, which is road one, the longer road. And the reason is, um, it is preferred for plowing, it's easier to plow and maintain. And, um, the, I know we started this process that was preferred by the town to, to have, to have that hammerhead turnaround. So we did, we did work with that design, um, and that's what, that's what you've seen on the plans from, from day one is, you know, from us. So, um, we'll discuss that and see if the board had any, any discussion on that, uh, as far as that goes.
As far as leaving the hammerhead?
That's correct, yep.
Yes, I, I agree with Brad. I, I maintain, uh, ways and a hammerhead, uh, is a lot easier to maintain. And what we've done on most places in the past few years is, uh, have hammerhead turnaround. And kind of done away with the cul-de-sac thing.
The other opinions of the board?
Oh.
Yes, Ken?
The road commissioners in the past have stirred us away from the cul-de-sacs. They're much harder for them to maintain. We have given these plans to the, uh, the, uh, current road commissioners and I've, I've got no negative comments back on that. And that's probably another issue that we need to address in that subdivision reg, uh, an area to change.
Okay, but the, but these are private roads, correct?
Yeah.
Other road commissioners would not be, unless they were hired as private individuals, they would not be plowing as town employees.
I, I, I believe in our ordinance. Uh, we still have to, uh, run these roads, pass the commission and the fire chief. I, I believe that's true.
Yeah. Yeah. Do I remember that the chief came out one time, actually, Ken, and looked at these? On the first road?
The, the current chief has and the prior chief both were out there and they were both okay. And we're talking fire chief, right?
Yes, yes, fire chief. The current one, uh, looked at the, particularly the longer road. He was happy with it. Okay. All right, Brad?
Good, I, you know, like I said, I just wanted to clarify, I didn't want to get too far into this and have to make, that would have been a ma, a major change. And I, and I guess kind of give you an idea where we're, we're at at this point. We have had a meeting with DEP regarding the SLOTA. We had a good meeting and, uh, we're working with them to complete the application, um, and, and to obtain a permit. And, um, so we have got some comments back from them, we're addressing those comments and, uh, working towards approval for that. So, um, so I guess that's what I have tonight. And, uh, I didn't know if there was any other questions from the board?
All right, so you, what you have submitted so far and what you're going to bring to us is that going to actually be a, a new plan? Showing the placement of the houses, the septics, et cetera, and the contours, correct?
Yeah, actually the homes and the driveways and everything are on, it, it'll actually have the grading.
The grading as well.
That's, uh, that have, have more of a steeper slope. So that, so that way it'll kind of show how they're all going to lay out. So, um, so that, that'll have all that and address all the comments that are, um, that have been submitted to us. So, and so we'll have a, a pretty complete and comprehensive plan.
Right.
Kenny, don't we, uh, I thought I was reading that, um, a soil analysis or, uh, a septic design has to be, um, laid out for each lot before we, um, grant this conditional use?
The subdivision.
For subdivision.
Yeah, they, they've done their test pit datters and I'd have to look to see if we've got the current ones for these lots and the, uh, replacement system location as well.
Yes, Ken, now, I remember seeing it on the map. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so we did do additional test pits and we've got all lots of test pits at this point with passing pits to, uh, we show our, uh, reserve area and, uh, proposed septic area on, on every lot. So, so that, so that should be all set.
So what are we looking at now?
Brad's going to officially put in writing the replies to Ben and him and Ben can narrow that list down a little further.
So we could go through our checklist maybe next week?
We'll see, uh, we'll see if those guys get the information in.
Okay.
Okay.
And what, do you have anything else out there?
I, I had made, uh, three recommendations in the, in the memo that, uh, I, I can summarize for folks. I, I think that the decisions that the board is going to need to be making, uh, in relatively short. uh, in relatively short order have to do with the completeness of the application, whether or not to hold a public hearing on this project. And, uh, I do understand, uh, that there have been, uh, a, a sidewalk or two already. I did, uh, note in that memo, and I think that this is what Mr. Jones was talking about. Uh, I, I wrote that there's a sidewalk scheduled for this project on July 2nd, which was based on a, uh, I, I believe it was an agenda that had, I had seen. So I don't know, and maybe this is an opportunity for the chair or for Ken to clarify whether or not there is an app, uh, an actual sidewalk scheduled.
There's no sidewalk schedule for the Martel property on July 2nd. That, we do have a sidewalk schedule for July 2nd for, uh, da-da-da-da, Mahoney subdivision. No, it's a public hearing. Public hearing is what's scheduled for that subdivision. You may have just seen subdivision and a date and a public hearing schedule, July, for the Mahoney subdivision.
Definitely got my wires crossed on that. So, uh, to confirm, there, there is currently no sidewalk scheduled. Thank you.
No, there is no sidewalk scheduled. Leslie, have you any questions?
Unmute.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yep. You sound like a commercial.
I know. Uh, I have a question for Ben. Um, I, you know, and when I picked up my packet today, I reviewed the, uh, letters and information we received from Drummond and Woodsum. And in it, they stated that they thought we should, um, put this on hold until we get, until answers come back from DEP.
Leslie?
Yes.
If I can interrupt.
Yes.
At this particular point, letters from outside attorneys are not holding any bearing with us. Uh, we have to get our completeness done. We have to make sure, that's why I was actually thinking, next week would be a time where we might go through, uh, you know, then sending in new plans. Uh, we might kind of do a cursory, uh, uh, a review, uh, making sure that we have everything that we need on the completeness of package for ourselves. And we're not, um, DEP will take care of BEP. Uh, all the others will take care of the others. We have to stay focused on our, um, part in this big picture and our blue book. This is, this is.
Like I said, I just wanted to clarify that and, um.
No, we, we are not entertaining, uh, anything from the, uh, outside of, uh, Mr. Martel and his, uh, uh, people. We're not entertaining outside at all.
So we should be just putting this aside for the moment, then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you for the clarification.
Oh, not a problem. Mr. Crowley, have you anything to add or ask? Get on, um, unmute yourself. Jim?
Can you hear me now? Oh, my God. I mean, this is just.
One quick shortcut is to just press your spacebar, and that will unmute you momentarily.
Great trick. I like that, Ben, thank you.
I know what it is.
Oh, hi, hi there, yeah.
I'm all set at this time, I got no questions.
Very good, thank you. Gavin, have you anything at this point? Gavin, please unmute yourself. Okay, Gavin.
Joe Joyce, thank you.
You're welcome. Tom, have you any further questions at this point?
Just on behalf of, of, uh, the discussion, trying to pull in all points, I hope at some point in time, um, uh, maybe after the public hearing, that the lawyers for Arnie and, uh, those representing Julia can be somehow, uh, entered into the record. Um, the, the, uh, certainly the points brought up and discussed.
Tom, again, we're not going to entertain those tonight. Anything we get from Julia is, anything we get from Julia is entered into our record. It becomes part of the record at the appropriate time, which is the public hearing. We will hear them and we will discuss it. I'm not entertaining any discussion about it now.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Ben, anything, uh, from you more?
Uh, no, I, I think I will, uh, look forward to, uh, getting some additional information from the applicant and, uh, make sure that, uh, that gets over to the town office.
Great, okay. Uh, Dennis?
At this point, I would like to, uh, respond.
Look this way.
Respond to the meeting from last week. Uh, during the meeting, I asked the chair respectfully to ask the host, uh, not to allow any emails, uh, text messages, whether across the screen, it was very distracting. In conversation with the administrative of Zoom, uh, she put out an email during the meeting last week, and she said she had no control of that. And so what I'm going to do now, this is what she told me to do, to respectfully ask the chair, uh, any outside interference when something is not on the agenda, uh, not be allowed to be put on the screen. Personal messages.
Uh, that is a, an in-house situation. I, I hope we've made it clear that, um, our meetings, the public is welcome to watch and listen. We do not entertain any conversation, any inquiry, any question of any nature. We can't emphasize that enough. Um, it's not because we don't like people. Those are the rules. We do not entertain during a regular meeting. I have constantly, whether it at a sidewalk or a regular meeting, if you have a question you want for us, write it down so you don't forget. Save it for the public hearing. That's, I'm going to call that the, the, the end of that. Because i- if there are more emails that come up that are extremely distracting, I mean, uh, we have, um, five, 10, 15, 20, uh, gosh, 25, 30, 35, 40. Um, more than 40 people here wa- watching us tonight. And then having half the screen go to messages. But that's the conversation we should have after we're through with our business. And we are working on it. So thank everybody for being mindful of that and respecting the wishes. Uh, back to business. Uh, Jim, have you anything you'd like to add on Mr. Martel's behalf? Unmute yourself.
I have, thank you. No, I think that we understand, we, we're in the completeness phase, and, uh, Brad will be working on materials to a- address Ben Smith's concerns and comments and the comments of this board. And, uh, we'll get that application in to you for a completeness review, uh, as soon as possible, we're hoping for next week.
Very good.
Thank you.
We would hope the same. Thank you, thank you guys very much. Brad, if nothing else, have a good rest of your evening.
Yeah, you too, thank you for your time.
Thank you all very much.
Quick question.
Yes.
Have we scheduled a public hearing for?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Not yet. Okay. Let's go on to, uh, business. Belle and Jennifer Bigford. Now, I know I saw Mr. Big, a while ago. I hope he didn't get, um.
Discouraged?
I hope he didn't get discouraged. Mr. Bigford, are you still with us?
I don't, uh.
I'm looking. Uh.
I don't, I don't see him anymore. I did send him an email and just asked if he wanted to, uh, wait until we got past the Zoom so he could, uh, participate normal, in a normal site setting. I didn't get a reply, but I did see him on here.
Yeah, I've just, I've just gone through, uh, two full pages of people here. And, uh, and I don't see him. Ken?
Uh, I, I think we're all set with Ben. If Ben has something, Ben, to move on from.
I believe he is.
Yeah.
I believe he is.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, so, uh, not seeing or hearing from Mr., uh, Bigford. I guess we can, we can call, uh, hopefully, well, Ken, go ahead.
I, I do have one other thing that popped up. I don't know if I still have my little section on the agenda, but, um, I had a relocation issue or, that's Mr. Jones, which is, I think his computer is the Speccs, S-P-E-C-S. And he is muted, let's see if he can unmute himself.
Wait a minute. Oh, I see. He was Speccs. Mr., what is his name?
Uh, here he comes.
Hello.
Mr. Jones had a best practical location. He had, um, let me grab the paper.
Yeah. Nope. Probably a quick one.
He approved his low relocation on September 15th of 2019. He's at, uh, 187 Seventh Street. Um, and he was going to be, I think, 48 feet away from the road.
Ken?
Yep.
Come forward again, and please don't move around so much. Thank you.
I'll have a new budget next week, I want one of those headphones.
Good idea, but it's the microphone. All right, so, so last September.
Yep, we did a relocation for Mr. Jones. He is 187 Seventh Street, September, uh, 5th of 2019. We did a relocation for him, uh, and he was 48 feet away from the lake, was going to be his new location. They've run into some issues, and I'll let him speak to that for revision.
So there's a retaining wall. Um, and I put, I put the, the rear wall of the foundation two feet from the retaining wall. Uh, the retaining wall holds the driveway up. And, um, that, that's how far back I was going to move the house. So it's 24 feet farther back than it was originally. And, um, what happened is when, uh, Dave Wenshaw came to dig, he said that, um, he couldn't put the house two feet away from that retaining wall. The retaining wall would fall right back down. And he needs four extra feet to, um, take care of drainage. Um, you can't come off of a driveway directly into a foundation. You need land there to absorb the water. So, um, so what I'm asking, and it was my mistake that I didn't call, um, Ken Paul as soon as this issue came up. And, um, so what I'm asking is can I move the house forward enough to allow for, um, the drainage to be put between the driveway and the house itself? So that the house itself would be moving about four feet for, uh, farther forward, closer to the lake?
Joyce, uh, none of this is in your packets. This just came to us at, uh, 6 o'clock tonight. We were out there and, uh, looked at a situation, so none of it's.
I, I have the original one in my notebook.
Oh, you are good.
Yeah, I, I have the original, um, room, uh, Robert Jones, 199 Seventh Street. Best practical location, application to demo existing structure. Build a new single-family dwelling within the 30% expansion. You only move to accept the best practical location submitted by Robert Jones to demo and rebuild, no closer than 48. Leslie seconded, motion passed. That was the original. So now we're just looking 44 feet, is that what it's going to be?
Well, um, one corner is 43 and the other corner is 44. That's, that's, um, I measured it this afternoon. Um, and i- it's a little bit more than that, but if you round down, it, that's what it is.
Um, Joyce?
Yeah.
Just a procedural point. I don't think we should start, uh, at this point in time with virtual Zoom, uh, condition use permits.
I'm sorry, Tom, I didn't hear the whole thing you said.
I, I think this should be brought up at a, at a different time, um, hopefully when we don't have to rely on the Zoom, um, process to, uh, look over Mr. Jones's plans.
Um, Tom, that, that, we all wish that were possible, but we may be doing this for the next three or four months. Uh, and I don't know how fair it would be for us to.
We have no. Kenny said, you know, this is 6:00 PM old, it's three hours old, uh, in terms of our, uh, receipt of this. And, uh, nobody has any paperwork in front of them pertaining to it. I s- I just think it takes some time unnecessarily taken away from, uh, our existence when, when we chat about things like this, uh, prior to when we should start.
Okay, thank you. Say what?
Two things. Um, nobody disagrees with this Zoom more than I do, but, uh, we're stuck with it. And I, I honestly believe we've already visited this place. Uh, we have some idea of, of basically what, uh, the site looks like. Uh, we also need to take, uh, code enforcement, uh, expertise on some of this stuff. Uh, I'm not so sure, and this will go to Ken, uh, if Mr. Wenshaw is qualified, uh, to make that decision, uh, to agree with it.
They, um, they, they also hit some ledge in the back foot in his wedding, too. And I'll let, uh, Mr. Jones speak to that.
Yeah, so in the back, in the back, um, right corner, in the back left corner, they hit some ledge. So that, that was another reason they wanted to move it forward a couple of feet. Um, but the, the main, the main reason was, um, he could, and when I made the original drawing, um, I wasn't aware that they couldn't put it a couple of feet from the, uh, resisting, the, um, the driveway. And, um, Dave, as soon as he came down, he looked at it, he goes, Bob, we can't do this. He said, there's no way. If I, I need four feet of land to put drainage in. You can't have water coming out the driveway right into a foundation. He said, that's not going to work. And, um, I made a mistake. I said that, well, when I first originally talked to Ken, he told me to make the house, um, and move it back as far as possible. I said, well, if you're telling me that's as far as possible, then, then that, that's where it's going to have to go, I guess. then that's where it's going to have to go, I guess. So that was, that's all on me.
I appreciate what you're saying and I appreciate the problem you have. And I'm not against whether you move it towards the lake another couple of feet. You got to do what you got to do. But my question is, I guess really for Ken, he's the expert in this, not the excavator. So I want to see if Ken agrees with what Winchell said. And if he does, that's fine. And, well, he, we don't take recommendations from a private excavation company. At least I don't.
Okay. Before we go any further, I'd like to get back to Tom's question. I would just to pass the board in the most casual way. Do you mind if we hear this tonight? We've got most of the information. Leslie?
I think we've already pretty much heard it.
Thank you.
I don't see why we don't go forward.
Jim, do you mind if we go forward?
I'm there, Jim.
Jim, if you want to go forward, give me a thumbs up. Thank you. Gavin? Go forward? This is casual. Thank you. All right, we'll go forward, Ken. So Ken, could you answer, please, if you would be in agreement that this is the best way to solve the water problem that would occur in putting a driveway up against the foundation?
I love the spacebar trick I learned tonight. Mr. Jones, in the terminology, best practical location that the state requires us to do. So he brought it back to, there's a set of CMP power lines back there and he rotated the house and brought it back right up to the edge of the driveway to the east area there. A couple of extra feet off that driveway would be better and easier for the drainage to work, to capture it as it comes down. As everyone knows, Seventh Street is very steep going in there. So if he did have a better area in there to capture it, it's not going to hurt. I think 43 feet is what he had. That that's the foundation to the 43 feet off the water. He's still going to need a little bit for the overhangs.
So what's the number?
So.
41, 0.5 or some, 41.
42, right?
No closer than 42, including the overhang?
I think so. Yeah.
Gavin, Gavin had the same thing.
Oh, Gavin, yes.
Is there anything that can be done with the driveway to remedy the water issue?
I think it's a paved driveway, straight right down. And it's the typical 50-foot lots on Seventh Street. The house is 30 feet wide roughly or so with a 200-foot setback. So that's going to be all that. As the water comes down that driveway, he's now going to be able to capture it behind the back of the house. And I would think if we are going to move it forward, maybe a detention rain garden type thing in the back of that house would be a good spot for it. Otherwise, it's got to go around the house to capture it on the lakeside.
What's the map and lot on that? Yeah. Ken, that's, that's, it's 19, is the address 19?
No, 187.
187, okay.
The map is 151, the lot is 16. 151, 16.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I make a motion that we approve the best practical location. Well, 187 Seventh Street. Map 151 dash 16. To relocate the house, move closer than 42 feet from the lake.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing on, or vote? Jim Crowley? Hit the spacebar, mute. I need to hear you. It's a vote. Thank you. Gavin?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Dennis votes yes.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
We're all set. Okay.
This, Mr. Jones, if you're available, come on in in the morning and we'll clean up what we got for paperwork and see what we need to do.
Okay. 9 o'clock?
And closer to 10.
All right, I'll be there at 10 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, guys. Thank you. If you'll notice, our agenda has a new look. We have now pending projects. We're no action to be taken. They are placeholders. It's a placeholder. We have Mr. Mahoney, who July 2nd is his public hearing. Grammy Rose, public hearing on July 9. York County Agriculture, that's the mineral extraction application for parking lot expansion. No new information at this time. These are simply placeholders. On the bottom are, you know, again, reminders of particular dates. Now, one thing I'd like to say tonight, and if you also notice, this is, this agenda is correct as of June 23rd, 2020. It is subject to change without notice. Saw that tonight. Sometimes we can make things happen. I would like to tonight address the selectman meeting from last night. Last night, the selectman found it necessary to realize or they had realized that they had been remiss in applications. And, I'm sorry, not applications, but in, in appointments. Every one of us on this board, except for Dennis Wong, our appointments run out the end of this month. They didn't take any action on it. And last night, they decided they had to take action. There's been a lot of talk going on about this person is interested in being on the board and that person is being interested on the board. And a lot of. So for all of us who have been on this board for a long period of time, anywhere from, I don't know. Tom, how many years have you been on the board?
30 years, 10 years? Ken?
I don't know if you got the update, but that's back on the agenda for next week with the selectmen's agenda.
Back on the selectmen's agenda.
I had just gotten a call a little while ago that that's back on to do the appointments.
To do the appointments. Well, I will finish what I was going to say, which was we were appointed, they decided they would appoint us for 30 days. I'm not going to go into too much depth about what I thought of that. Just to let you know, I didn't think very highly of it. Trying to be fair and open because of respect. I have a planning board and for working with Ken Paul, Brenda Charlin and Christina. We'll wait till next week. I think to, you know, we need one, two, and three-year appointments. If we don't have one, two, and three-year appointments, I don't think it shows much respect for what we do and what we've done. And it's totally unnecessary. I just wanted to say that. Ken, I'm glad to hear what you said. I think it's very, it's very disrespectful and very hurtful. I couldn't even speak to Tom or Gavin to what they might have. I know Leslie and I, on our own money, have gone to class after class after class and have certificates for at least 12 different planning board classes we've taken, everywhere from legal to how to deal with an unruly crowd at a meeting. We all give a lot of time. The pay is, I don't know what we'd call it, except it's nothing. We do not get paid for this. We give hours of work for this job. We know the rules. We are a quasi, I wish Ben was still here. We are considered a quasi judicial board by the state. We judge when things are done. We judge the completeness of an application. We have to know what we're talking about. It's very easy for uneducated people in this particular realm to make decisions and make comments about what we're doing. People don't seem to realize we have no choice in what we. Everything we do has been voted on, approved by our town meeting. Town meeting is our form of government. Every single ordinance is approved by town meeting. Everything that we do is done by town meeting. In a few cases, by state. I think you all deserve a great deal of respect and I'm proud of every one of you. So let's see what they come up with next week and hope things change and you get the respect you have coming to you. Okay, after that, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you all. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Joyce.